Charlotte, good? You're good? Charlotte, good? Ready, Dr. Scheichl?
I am, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We're calling the Rockingham County School Board meeting for March 22nd to order. In order to begin the meeting, we need to approve the agenda. Board members who have a motion to approve the agenda.
I so moved that we approved the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. I was worried there for a second. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Any questions or discussion, board members? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries five zero. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll take a moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Miller.
Chair Reed, members of the board, Dr. Scheichl, welcome to Monta Video Middle School, a school of peace and love downtown Penn Laird. We have your water being delivered momentarily. Here, we're gonna have to, it's gonna be a thing. The viewers at home will know we want to stay well hydrated here at Monta Video during board meetings, especially as we wear masks and our mouth dries out a little faster. Okay, tonight, we have, as usual, our school recognitions. We're gonna have our Kelly Coggsdale Character Counts Students of the Month, and then our volunteer, or Brittany Lamb, excuse me, Kelly Coggsdale, Character Counts Students of the Month, and then our Volunteer of the Month. First off, to present to our Students of the Month, I would like to bring up Ms. Laura Gunther.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. If I could have Eric Ward come join me up here? Thank you, Eric. Eric has been recognized by his teachers as someone who consistently participates in class and has a wonderful attitude. He is always willing to participate, lead, and lend a helping hand. Even in his virtual classes, he is a leader and willing to help others. He has a great attitude and willingness to learn and ask questions when needed. Congratulations, Eric. Don't, just hold on, Eric.
All right, so Eric, on behalf of the Rockingham County School Board, congratulations. What a high honor. Can you tell us who you brought with us with you tonight?
My mom and dad.
Can you stand, please? So Eric, on behalf of the Rockingham County School Board, I have a certificate, a character count certificate for you, a pin for you to wear, and also, this is the part so you didn't want to miss, because it's a gift certificate to Klein's Dairy Bar and Appreciation. Exactly. See? So, congratulations, thank you, for being an outstanding student.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, next, can Anya Kirkpatrick, please, come up? Hi, Anya. Anya has been recognized by her teachers as she has made an effort to be an active participant in HLA. She completes her work faithfully and tries to support her teachers in the virtual classroom. Anya is a great role model for her peers during virtual learning. She engages with her teacher and her classmates and is also willing to have her camera on, one of the few. She does a great job keeping up with her schoolwork. In addition, she is kind and respectful to everyone. Congratulations, Anya.
So, Anya, on behalf of the Rockingham County School Board, I give you the certificate, Character Counts, thanks for being an awesome student. Pin's a pin. And you also get your own Klein's Dairy Bar gift certificate. Congratulations.
So often, students and kids are a reflection of their parents. It was really funny when I asked Ms. Gunther if she was gonna remind the parents about tonight. She said Ms. Ward had already contacted her a couple times, and it's also reminded me that Ms. Kirkpatrick's like five doors down. So, she's a, Ms. Kirkpatrick teaches here at Monta Video, so. But hats off to both families, because your kids are wonderful. We'd love to have more of them, so. Next up is Ms. Baker with the Volunteer of the Year recognition.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. Unfortunately, our Volunteer of the Year cannot be here with us in person as she is away on business, but I do know she's here in spirit. And I think if she could have changed her flight to be here, she would have, because that is the kind of dedication Mrs. Julie Pate has to Monta Video Middle School and our students. When I called Julie to share that we had selected her as our volunteer, her first words were along the lines, this is pretty much a direct quote, "I am honored, but I don't think I can accept this. We work as a team." You just heard about students who demonstrate great character. Julie is clearly deserving of a Klein's gift certificate, too, based on her response. And Julie is right. She is in her second year as our PTSA Hospitality Chairperson, and she leads an incredible team of volunteers. They provide our staff with monthly pick-me-ups, ranging from mailbox treats to special meals to holiday gifts. Last March 13th, when we had an emergency workday called, Julie quickly arranged for smoothies to be delivered to the staff as the reality of COVID hit our state and we began to prepare for virtual learning. This small act of kindness brought many smiles on a scary and sombering day. Julie and her team have continued to boost staff morale as they have adapted to every protocol and guideline we have set in order to serve our staff safely this year. Her creativity, planning, and flexibility are second to none. Julie does everything with positive energy and a huge smile that is visible even behind her mask. Thank you for everything you do for us, Julie. And let's give her a round of applause, even though she's not here with us in person.
One of the things I love most about my job is providing opportunities to students and staff that would not otherwise be possible. Tonight, I'd like to tell you briefly about one recent opportunity. As soon as my friend's daughter was hired in June of 2019 to be one of Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor's personal aides, I told her I would be bringing students to meet the justice. It was just a question of how many kids I could bring from Monta Video and when. Justice Sotomayor has a reputation for using the hard truths of her childhood to encourage others, especially kids. Her story is one that resonates with all of us, but most specifically with Latinas from working-class households. In fact, there are various versions of her autobiography for young children all the way through adulthood in both English and Spanish. After learning that I would only be allowed to bring 20 to 25 students at the most to meet the justice, I wrote a RIFI grant with Ms. Teresa Childs to buy 25 copies of the adolescent version of her book, The Beloved World of Sonia Sotomayor. One of the benefits of applying for a grant, RIFI or otherwise, is you gather hard data to build a case for why your grant is worthy. According to numerous studies, adolescent Hispanic girls are significantly more likely than their white counterparts to drop out of school, experience teenage pregnancy, suffer from depression, and/or attempt suicide. I got the grant from RIFI, and I worked with one of our eighth-grade civics teachers, Ms. Childs, to identify five girls, five eighth-grade girls, who had the greatest potential to lead on this project. At Monta Video, we want to hold a crown above every student's head as they enter into our school and then just help them grow into it. So, the Supremes, there they are, they call themselves, really took on this role, and it was, it was just really exciting. They drafted a letter and they sent it to Justice Sotomayor, and whenever you write a Supreme Court justice, it has to go through a number of processes to actually get it to the justice. So I was texting my friend, like, "We sent the letter months ago." And it has to be checked for various things because of the position she's in. But we did hear back, but these girls, right here, these five, they started reading and discussing her book. They worked together to create discussion questions and topics for about 20 other eighth-grade girls who shared similar backgrounds. And they, this is a slide they made when they talked to another group of girls about it. Typically, I would not put on a PowerPoint all about the justice. So anyways, that's, this was my crew. They were so great and so excited to have this opportunity. During this time, I shared this exciting opportunity with our PTA. And because our PTA's president is a father, excuse me, PTA president's father is a congressman from Baltimore, Maryland, his name's Dutch Ruppersberger, we were able to line up a private tour of the Capitol and the surrounding grounds that would be likely given by the congressman on the same day in late April we were going to meet, be meeting with Justice Sotomayor. And then COVID showed up. The world shut down, and our April 28th trip was canceled. But we got a ton out of the year, and here's a quick message from Ms. Childs about the experience. Speaking of Congress, sometimes we filibuster, and that's something I am good at. I'm really good at talking a lot without saying much. And so, I hope we are good to go.
Hello, I'm Teresa Childs, and I just wanted to tell you that I appreciated and enjoyed the opportunity to work with Drew and our students during our Sonia Sotomayor book groups last year. Although our much anticipated meeting with Justice Sotomayor was derailed due to COVID-19, we had a wonderful time meeting as a group and discussing her life and her book, The Beloved World of Sonia Sotomayor. It was beautiful to see typically shy and reserved students engage and talk with passion about Justice Sotomayor's life and the challenges that she faced as a child. And the students were able to use her story to reflect upon their own lives and the challenges that they faced as young adults. We witnessed students finding their voice, and we saw others rise up as leaders within the group. It was really awesome to see kids recognize their own potential and run with it. So although the pandemic abruptly ended our project, I am hopeful that we can try again in the future because it was such a worthwhile experience. Thank you for your time, take care.
Because the visit with the justice is considered a private matter, this is the most you guys will ever hear about this visit. It's the most I can ever say about it if and when we eventually get to go. No photos are allowed to be taken except by the court photographer. No media, social or otherwise. With 25 eighth-grade girls, that was my biggest concern. No posts on the Instagram or the Facebook or MySpace or whatever it is. But that was gonna be the deal. In a year or two, I may simply ask Jeremy Mason, if I can borrow a highway-worthy bus for a day? That's why I maintain my CDL. You won't have to approve this field trip because we now consider DC an in-state field trip. This is it. This is all you would ever know. As educators, we are the means and not the ends. While this experience won't and can't get any fanfare or publicity, it's not what it's all about. It just might change the trajectory of a few lives forever. That's why I do this crazy principal thing. But here we go. So that's it. That's the exciting thing we did, we're working on last year, and we are hopeful that we'll be able to continue it once things open back up. It's time for the Inspire Awards. It's time for the Inspire Awards. All right, here we go.
I'll cue you, Mr. Miller.
Okay, you cue me.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Miller. And please express our appreciation to Ms. Childs and also those members of our community that have worked with you on this project. So we appreciate it. And speaking of RIFI, we'll move into Inspire Awards, because they do graciously provide the gifts that are associated with the awards. So first up, I think, is Julie Pence, who was going to present to Travis Myers. Are either of them here? Okay? Mr. Miller? Oh. Good. Nope. Mr. Miller is gonna-
I am gonna talk about you. It's gonna be great. It's gonna be great. I'm not, I'm not Julie Pence. I have, Julie Pence has nominated Mr. Myers for the Inspire Award, because he goes above and beyond to help both the student and their parent or guardian with all academic endeavors. As you know, Mr. Myers works in special ed at Rockingham Academy. Her son respects Mr. Myers, and Mr. Myers respects her son. Her son has come a long way the past two years, and she owes that to Mr. Myers. She just wants to thank Travis for making her child feel important and respected, and that's what we're all about. I'm presenting you with a certificate for the Inspire Award, and I've got a feeling Klein's is gonna have something to do... Nope. RIFI, RIFI's stepping in with something else. Congratulations. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Myers, for all you do for our children. We appreciate it. You're welcome. Next presenter is Danielle Shiflett, presenting to Wendy Constable.
Yes, my name is Danielle Shiflett. I want to present Ms. Wendy Constable with Inspire Award. Ms. Constable has been my son Lincoln's teacher for the last two years. She has worked with him so much. Lincoln has had a few surgeries while he's in Ms. Constable's class. She has always checked in on him. She's called me and even came to visit us while in the hospital with Lincoln. She has a very special place in our heart, and a true blessing to Riverbend Elementary School and us.
Thank you, Ms. Constable, for all you do for the students at Riverbend. We appreciate it. Ms. Shiflett, thank you for being here this evening and presenting to Ms. Constable. Next is Katie Dredger and Jade Armentraut, presenting to Kelly Brady.
Hello, I'm Jade Armentraut, and I nominated Ms. Brady for the Inspire Award, because she deserves so much more recognition than she already gets. She has helped me and so many other students, not only with academic help, but also surviving the pandemic and looking on the bright side in every circumstance. Throughout my four years at Spotswood High School, she's inspired me to do better, and she has just made the community such a better place, and she's even helped me create two new clubs at Spotswood. She's always provided me with a safe space when I've needed it, and she's also given me and my family support when we've needed it most. She's a community superhero.
You did a great job. Along the same lines, I have a daughter who's also a senior, and for the first two years at Spotswood, she always came home and said, "How nice, and how wonderful, and how helpful her guidance counselor was." My husband and I have been high school educators. He was a guidance counselor, and he would always say, "I can't believe what they're doing with the schedule this year." As soon as the pandemic hit, we saw schedules change. We know you all were reaching out to students to help them with meals. And all the time, my senior never once worried about her college applications. She knew it was gonna be taken care of. So, thank you.
Ms. Brady, thank you for all you do for the students at Spotswood and helping them navigate through the high school years. We greatly appreciate it. Ms. Dredger and Ms. Armentraut, thank you for sharing your evening with us tonight to honor Ms. Brady. We appreciate it. You're welcome. Next is Kevin Rodenizer, presenting to Tom Johnson. Mr. Miller? I think it's your cue again.
All right, Mr. Johnson teaches science at Spotswood High School. We always like to call Monta Video Graduate School. According to Kalen Rodenizer, when she was in his class for environmental science, he really inspired her, or him, to care more about the earth and watch what I'm doing, because it really does have an impact. So congratulations, Mr. Johnson. Here's your certificate. And whatever's in there. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for sharing your talents and your love of environmental science with our students at Spotswood. We appreciate it. Next is Elizabeth Stapleton, or Stapleton, to Jan Payne of Monta Video.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Stapleton. I'm a ninth grader at East Rockingham High School, and I nominated Ms. Payne, because she is an amazing, inspiring teacher who takes teaching to an entirely new level. Along with her fun, creative teaching methods, she also inspires students by directing the musical at Monta Video Middle School. Monta Video didn't even have a musical until Ms. Payne came along and brought us one. And she's just a bright ray of sunshine. And she's just, she's so amazing, so thank you. Here's your certificate. Of course.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. I don't know if there's any more adjectives that I can add to what Elizabeth has shared with you. Congratulations. Elizabeth, thank you for being here this evening and taking the time to share some insight about Ms. Payne. Next, Drew Miller is gonna present on behalf of Jenny Turner, presenting to Grant Dischroon from Monta Video.
All right. I know these, you know, we hire amazing people and just try and support them and stay out of their way. So it's really an honor as principal to recognize Ms. Payne and Mr. Dischroon. All right, as you know, I'm not Jenny Turner. Mr. Dischroon teaches math here, eighth grade, and Algebra One Part One here at Monta Video Middle School. He made an impact on her daughter during one of the hardest parts of her educational journey. During Zoom lessons, he reached out to make sure the students were okay. The pandemic has made connections for kids learning at home so difficult. "I was worried about my daughter Amelia," says Mr. Turner, "who would lose the teacher-student connection." His rapport with his students, his willingness to connect with students, reteaching if necessary, and easing the worries that beginning teenagers have was well beyond the scope of his job. He genuinely was concerned for their learning and well-being. Thank you, Mr. Dish.
Congratulations, Mr. Dischroon. Thank you for all you do. We appreciate it. That concludes our Inspire Awards for tonight. We will do Inspire Awards again in a month, correct, Dr. Scheikle? So if anybody has anybody, anyone that they would like to nominate, you can find that information on the RIFI website at refigivesback.org. I encourage our community to continue to acknowledge and recognize our teachers who are doing outstanding jobs during these very difficult times. We're gonna move on to comments from the public. We have one person signed up to speak before the board tonight, Nancy Bassett. Ms. Bassett? Good evening.
Now it's on? Okay. Chairman Reed, school board members, Dr. Scheikle. First of all, I need to apologize to you, because at the last school board meeting, I realized that we missed School Board Appreciation Month. So there is a little gift for you on your table, and we just want you to know that even though it's been a crazy year and things are a little out of order, we just wanted you to know that we appreciate everything that you're trying to do for us. And then, second, the Rockingham County Education Association would like to know what the protocol will be for using the cafeterias for breakfast and lunch for our students, and will these decisions be made countywide, or will they be just site-based?
So, as you know, during public comments, it's not a back-and-forth, so where we don't give answers, but I will address that in my own comments later.
Right. You're welcome. Thank you for coming out this evening. We appreciate it. And thanks for our chocolates. We appreciate that, too. Next is highlight by board members. We will start with Dr. McQuilkin.
Well, thank you, Ms. Reed. This evening, I have two highlights, and that would be, the first would be, that we're thrilled, absolutely thrilled, that students are going to be returning to school four days a week, beginning Monday, April 12th. It's been a long time coming, and we're just looking forward with great anticipation and positive vibes for the day to begin. The second is, we're very happy that Governor Northam announced that we will have graduations, services, or ceremonies in person, and we're delighted about that, too. So those are my two highlights for this meeting.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Mr. Falk?
I'd just like to say that it's a, it's a highlight to see that so many people are receiving their vaccinations, and things are moving forward there to make the community safer for everyone, and especially in the school system.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Ms. Lohr?
Well, my first highlight is to be back in the school. Monta Video's always so much fun. Kind of makes me wish I was in eighth grade, not really, because eighth grade is hard. But it's so much fun to be here. Thank you so much for hosting us tonight. And as usual, the Inspire Awards make you laugh and cry, and it's just so wonderful to be back, dealing with the things that are super important. It's all been important, but the students and hearing their stories, it's great. So thank you. Also, my other highlight for the week was, I got to go up in an airplane. I got to tour Dynamic Aviation in conjunction with a program that we're looking at starting at MTC. And I'm so very excited about this program, and I'd like to thank Mr. Fitzgerald and all the staff at MTC for working so hard on this program. I think it's gonna be really great for our students, even if you're not interested in airplane mechanics. This program encompasses hydraulics, metal fabrication, electronics, reading schematics. So I think it's gonna be a really great program for our students. And it was, it was a great day, so I want to thank Dynamic Aviation and everyone who made it possible, and everyone who's working so hard within our school system for all of our students. Thank you all so much. And thank you for giving us chocolate. And don't you dare say you're sorry for realizing that it's not February anymore. It's been quite, I think we're all still stuck in March of last year. But thank you so much for the chocolates, and thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Mr. Breeden?
Well, it's always a highlight to be at Monta Video. I find it difficult, as I, as I sit here in this auditorium, not to wax nostalgic. So if I, if I appear to be wondering, it's just thinking about the memories that I've had here. My mom went to school here. I was part of the last graduating class as a high school here. My kids came through here, and my grandkids are on the way. So it's great to be here, and it's always nice to see those teachers recognized. And I was thinking, we could give every, every teacher in our system an Inspire Award if we had that opportunity, because they all do a tremendous job.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Dr. Scheikle?
First, thanks to the Monta Video administration and support staff for hosting us here tonight. Much appreciated, as always, you know, get a meal, and it's excellent, as always. And also for your presentation, Drew. Hopefully, you can make that trip to see the Supreme Court Justice, because I can tell you, the only chance I've ever had to sit in and listen in on a case at the Supreme Court was with students at Broadway High School, and it's a chance not many students ever get in their lifetime. Were really two events. One was the second Clinton inauguration, but then also the Supreme Court case. And it's difficult to go there and get in, and students that I took still talk about it to this day. So hopefully, that works out for you and for those students. And then also, another highlight, Ms. Dredger has already left, but I had the privilege to see a student, Loretta Dredger, actually, one of my soccer players, find out before her mom did. She found out right there at the soccer field that she won Jefferson Scholarship at the University of Virginia. And it's probably one of the most stunned I've seen a student. But that's the quality of students we have. I know she was here at Monta Video. It's where I first met her parents, in a, I think you had an espresso bar, and so we could talk about education, and, but then she played soccer at Spotswood. And the Jefferson Scholarship, basically, every high school in the country can nominate no more than one student, so there can be about 5,000 nominations. In 2019, 2020, 32 students were awarded that scholarship, and it has a value of about $157,000, because it covers not only a full ride, but also allows the students to develop their own program, travel, and all of it is paid for by that foundation. And so, to have a student who's even becoming a finalist is rare, and I don't think we've ever had one at Spotswood, but for someone to win it, that was my highlight, just to see her sit down and not get back up for a few minutes, because she just really was that, just stunned and happy at the same time. So what our students achieve with the help of our educators is truly amazing.
Thank you, Dr. Scheikle. Only a couple of things that I wanted to mention is, Ms. Lohr mentioned our meeting with MTC this week. It was a great opportunity for us to meet with our colleagues in Harrisburg City Schools. We have not spent anything but virtual time with them, and we have, we enjoy a very warm relationship with them and like to bounce ideas off of them. So it was nice to be part of MTC and that meeting, and there's some things coming down the road that you'll start to hear about, that Ms. Lohr shared as far as MTC is concerned also. Mr. Miller, thank you for entertaining us and for your hospitality with your staff, your administrators. We greatly appreciate it. We know that it's always a little extra effort to keep the building open a little late at night, and so we appreciate that. Thank you. Next, we have action items, board members. The first action item is minutes from the last meeting. Do we have a motion for approval?
They're moved.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Any questions or discussion regarding the meeting minutes? Seeing none, please vote. Seeing none, please vote. Next action item is field trips. Dr. Scheichel?
Board members, in your materials, you have a field trip request from Turner Ashby FFA. During spring break, they will take six students to Smith Island for a community service project and barbecue chicken for the Talagin community. This is something they've done for over 20 years. Unfortunately, last year, that had to be canceled. There's a mitigation plan attached to the request as well. Students will be separated, you know, during travel, obviously. They will be distanced during travel, and they will have their own rooms. And this is, again, something that we can start doing again with the appropriate mitigation in place, and with only six students, the activity bus will be sufficient to have sufficient physical distancing, and I recommend approval of this field trip.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the Turner Ashby FFA field trip. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the field trip as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Any questions or discussion, board members? Seeing none, please vote. Next is Mr. Reed.
Dr. Scheichel, Mrs. Reed, members of the board. The bid for replacement of the visitor bleachers at Turner Ashby High School's main athletic field was properly specified and advertised. We had five firms that we sent bids to. We served two respondents that were deemed responsive. We received a third one by email, and this was a sealed bid, and upon further investigation, we found that they weren't even licensed in the state of Virginia. So our recommendation is to award the contract to the low bidder, Grandstand Design Enterprises, in the amount of $212,699.88. And you may say that sounds kind of odd, going down to the penny, but that does include a performance bond, and that's why it came out at that.
I recommend approval of the bid as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the Turner Ashby visitors bleacher replacement. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we accept superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or discussion?
They were close bids.
Yeah.
Mr. Reed, do we have other bleachers that are probably going to eventually need to be replaced? Do we have like a, kind of a rolling kind of idea right now?
The answer to that question is yes. The visitors bleachers at Broadway High School will probably be next in line. We've got athletic bleachers at some of the other fields throughout the county, not necessarily the main athletic field, but some of the other fields that will need to be addressed in the near future.
Okay.
So, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I knew we were getting closer on Broadway, probably, especially given the steepness of those bleachers, too. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
So, the bleachers at, the current bleachers at TA, what's going to happen to those?
They will be disposed of by the contractor.
Any other questions, board members? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Next is Mr. Fitzgerald about a course addition.
Chair Reed, school board members, Dr. Scheichel. If you remember, last fall, I brought to you a list of high school courses for the 2021-2022 school year, which you guys approved. Tonight, I asked for your approval for an additional class, Introduction to Teachers for Tomorrow. If approved, this course will be used as a summer offering, which will allow our high school students to participate in a field experience and an opportunity to investigate the possibility of a future teaching career. Students will work with our summer school teachers and actually work with the students as well as receive instruction in teaching, so that they will do that in summer school. Tonight, I present this to you for your approval. Are there any questions?
Are we going to start this year, or are we talking about summer of 2022?
Yes, ma'am. No, this would be actually for this summer, and the reasoning is, we anticipate students in summer school in person, of course, and the thinking is that we would have students actually help us in summer school while earning credit. So it'd be almost a mentorship experience, if you look at it that way, but it would also, hopefully, drum up some interest for our students to follow a teaching career.
I recommend approval of the course, Introduction to Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow, in the program of studies as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the course addition. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the course addition as explained by Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Any other questions, board members? Comments? I think this is a great program, Eric. I would hope that we'd have an embarrassment of riches of students that would want to apply for this. I think we know that we're headed in a direction where recruiting of teachers is going to be difficult, and if we can start at the high school level and then also start to work on more partnerships to get them into the college level, I think it's great. So, thank you. Anything else, board members? Okay. Motion carries, five zero. Thank you. We'll move into information items. Mr. Hand, special ed plan?
Good evening, board members. Chairman Reed, and school board members, and Dr. Scheichel, Superintendent Dr. Scheichel. It is springtime again, and like a bad penny, I reappear at the podium to talk to you about the annual plan for special education. We, once again, will be seeking federal dollars, known as flow-through dollars. We will, we've done this every year, and we'll continue to do so in the future. As a function of this process, I need to report to you, the school board, I also need to report to the Special Education Advisory Committee, which I've done last week. I am now providing information to you today, and then I will meet again with the Special Education Advisory Committee next month, and then at the second board meeting in April, I will return to you to seek approval for the plan. I must indicate through this plan that we have implemented the 2019-2020 plan in full. Of course, we strive for perfection, but we are dealing with situations that are sometimes problematic and controversial. However, we do try our best to provide a free and appropriate public education within the least restrictive environment for all of our students with disabilities. We have an excellent staff, in my opinion, that help us walk through that process every time we sit down to meet with a family. There are 22 assurances that are listed there. All of these must be met by the school division, and again, we do strive our best to meet all of these policy statements. I am somewhat biased, but I think we do an excellent job in that process. We are still participating in the Shenandoah Valley Regional Program, although that program has changed a great deal. If you remember about six, seven years ago, the State Department of Education started talking about changing that process, and it has happened. This is the first year that we, as a school division, are applying for the funds through the Intensive Support Needs Application. That's been a wonderful experience for me in my career, to put together a spreadsheet and look at our costs for students with disabilities. I am still, in a sense, attempting to reach for regional dollars, if you will, and I am asking for 1.995 million through that process. And with those monies, we are providing salaries and benefits for teachers, assistance, transportation services, speech therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, sign language interpreters, and behavior analysts. And by the way, getting back to the regional program, it is now essentially a contracted service agency. We receive services, occupational and physical therapy services through the regional program, and we also contract for our behavior analysts. But that's it. They no longer are funding any of our teachers' assistance. Some training is available. I'm still trying to get dollars from the regional program from time to time. In fact, earlier today, I did try again to get some training money, but it's not quite as available as it has been historically. I do list the projected funding for 21-22. Now, this is exactly our dollar amount for this particular year. I do not have these numbers for next year. They'll be coming out over the next few months and into the summertime, but you can see the breakdown by federal, state, local, and the grand total. That's a little different than I've presented to you in the past, but I wanted to kind of give you a picture of the total picture. We are still required to provide services for children in private schools, including homeschool children. For the upcoming school year, we'll be looking at approximately $71,000 in what is known as set-aside money. This is our proportionate share of federal dollars allotted to children with disabilities. That works out to an average of about $2,100 for students in home settings or private school settings. The State Department is taking a very close look at these expenditures, and we are doing a much better job of listing and following these expenditures. Our initiatives are essentially the same as they've been for previous couple of years. We are still involved with the traumatic brain injury procedures. We are still working with the Innovation Committee on Trauma-Informed Care. The Virginia IEP is in full bloom these days. We are doing a lot of training with that. We've done, our BCBA's have done a fine job developing functional behavioral assessment and behavioral intervention plan program processes. They've done a great job. In fact, they've already presented to one group, and they're presenting again on a state level regarding the procedures that they have developed. And we're continuing to work with the MANTC system for administrators, teachers, and counselors, and et cetera, to help us with behavioral programs. I also have a listing of our personnel, just as an FYI for you, and I break it down by local and federal dollars. And I want to highlight that we are working, we are currently contracting services, not only with the regional program, but we also work with Allied Instructional Services for Orientation and Mobility Training, which is CAINE training for our visually impaired students. We have one teacher of the hearing impaired that we split with Shenandoah County Public Schools, halftime with AIS and halftime with Shenandoah County Public Schools, and then we have a teacher of the visually impaired. And I will say that I'm very pleased with Allied Instructional Services, the quality of the folks that we're working with there is excellent. And our child count on this past December was just shy of 1,200. That doesn't include our 504 students, and that's about 170 students. So, are there any questions about that?
Board members, any questions or comments for Mr. Hand?
All right. Thank you very much.
Keep on doing what you're doing, Mr. Hand. I know that this has been a very difficult year, not only in terms of the challenges that we've had with our sped students during the pandemic, but also the challenges with the special ed program, none of which are their fault, and some of the red tape and paperwork you've had to do.
It has been a unique year, not just with the changes in the regional program, but also in some of the challenges that we've had in this process. But, you know, like I said, we try our best to stay on top of it.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Dr. Scheichel, you're going to talk about the budget.
Chair Reed, members of the board, and those present here and watching at home, as is our annual March ritual, we're talking about the budget for next school year. And we've already taken a number of steps at various times, beginning in October. Of course, the name associated with almost all of these is Cheryl Mast, our Chief Financial Officer, who always does an amazing job getting us ready for this, and working with principals, working with, you know, other division leaders on determining what needs exist and to pare those down. You've seen the previous requests that we get from schools, and then, you know, we've discussed a number of these different pieces over time. We had a public hearing, and then again, reviewed all the budget requests with the board, the governor's budget, and then, of course, this year, something unique. Just a month ago, you received an update about CARES funding, and then, again, we reviewed revenue and expenditures at the last board meeting. And so it's time for the final budget request. So a couple of years ago, and even a year ago, this is what we were talking about. So we need to find a way to move our learning environments into the future, to see what students would need in the future to be successful, and then to create those learning environments. And it, you know, we could really imagine this looking like this until we were confronted with this. You know, you have all the desks facing forward, students are significant distance from each other, they're wearing face masks, and, yeah, this is what we had to deal with over this last year, as we all know, right? So it doesn't always follow a neat path. I've talked about this previously. You know, it's not, everything moves in a straight line. There are obstacles that have to be overcome, and there are difficulties, and it's important for us to not lose sight of what our long-term goals are as we try to work through a global pandemic. We talked about our vision for RCPS, our focus on relationships, community, purposeful learning, and scholarship, but also making sure that the skills that are timeless, that help in a world that is ever-changing and rapidly changing, to be good citizens, to worry about those around us, to make sure that we work together, that we communicate well with all kinds of tools, that we think critically, and that we're also creative. And so what we talked about more over this last year were graphs about disease spread, how many cases we had in our building, and how to get students back into those empty classrooms. But in order to navigate that, again, we came back to what are the things that are really dear to us long-term, and what are the skills we need to navigate this? So I think the same skills that we talked about long-term are those that helped us navigate, you know, this crisis. So, for example, our communication tools that we didn't use prior to this pandemic. We had our division leadership meeting for the Future Focus Schools Collaborative as a Zoom meeting. We all know now what it is to have a Zoom meeting, and a year and a half ago, none of us did that, right? So it's a new tool. It's communication, and it allows us to do things at a moment's notice that, you know, we can save time with and that we can be very efficient with, but also realize, you know, what the shortcomings are. So we've now found new ways to communicate. We also, and Dr. McQuilkin alluded to the graduations coming up, we also had a graduation last year, when the rules at the time did not permit us to have a traditional graduation. We came up with one that at least got all students into the same space at the same time. We had graduation speakers. Students walked across the stage at the fairgrounds, a place that's very important in our community. And many parents at the time said this was the most unique graduation that they had seen across all the divisions, and that they really enjoyed it. In fact, this year, I've already received some requests from a few parents that said, why don't we do that every year? Although now, of course, with the new regulations... Although now, of course, with the new regulations, you know, there are also plans for a more traditional graduation again. But just being creative and looking at how we can conquer, you know, what's in front of us. We created basically a separate school system with the Home Learning Academy. So, we had to pull teachers from our schools, we had to create a brand-new schedule for students that would participate through Zoom meetings and also work in asynchronous mode. And for that, you know, with, just within a few weeks and months, basically had to create a system that students could attend all year long for those that were concerned about attending school in person. And so, again, there's a lot of communication, critical thinking, and creativity that goes into these. And that is going to continue. We, again, want to focus on making sure that we focus on these long-term goals of equipping our students with the skills that they need in this rapidly changing world, and to do it with that focus on relationships and community. And, again, we want to make sure that learning is purposeful and that we have quality scholarship. Some of the creativity, you know, there was a question earlier, how is that going to work when we bring all students back? Again, now that schools know students, some students will come back four days a week, there has to be some creative approach to the various items. And, for example, the question about lunches. Not every school looks the same. Not every school's lunch area is the same. Some of the restrictions during meals are still in place, so six feet separation. That doesn't allow us to have traditional cafeteria lunch. And because each school is unique, now that school, each school can decide how to creatively approach that and find solutions for their students. So, for example, in many cases, students will eat outside. Some students may eat in the cafeteria while others eat in the classrooms. But that's not possible in every building. Others may have just multiple lunch shifts that are more separated. So, that's going to be addressed by each school, and our leaders are equipped, you know, to make these creative decisions within the parameters that they have. But for this upcoming year, of course, we are still in a global pandemic. We have to be very careful, even though a vaccine is now, or vaccines are available. Our focus will continue to be on staff and student health and safety. When we proposed to move to three-foot minimum distancing, and again, that's a minimum, we talked about the research that indicates that that's safe. And as you know, last week, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention adjusted that based on similar research and the same research that we presented, to three feet. And so, there has to be that continued focus. You know, we cannot just simply let our guard down. But what we also know is that students have significant needs in terms of social-emotional learning, in terms of their mental behavioral health, and that's not new. We focused on that in past budget years, and that will be the case again. And we also have to be careful not to just focus on what some call this learning loss, like the stuff the kids didn't learn, right? We talked last year about focusing on narrowing the curriculum. How can we figure out what the essential ideas are, what the essential content is, and then to get to a level where you can apply it? And so, again, that needs to continue, and it's important that we look at long-term success to bring students back to these key ideas and the key content so they can be successful long-term, rather than cramming in all the stuff, all the memorization in short time, because, one, it's easily forgotten, and, two, it will be out of context. And so, we may feel good that we've now covered the curriculum, but we really do need to focus on long-term success. So, when we talk about health and safety, two major steps that we've already taken, and they're also reflected in the budget in terms of what we will continue to do, are improvements to ventilation. That was one of the areas, again, that we had looked at early on. You know, Drew Miller, for example, you know, was in a number of conversations with us about the Harvard School of Public Health and what their standards are and how we would meet those. And so, we spent one-time money on improving ventilation to increase health and safety in our schools. And on the left-hand side, you see one of our first vaccination clinics, right? So, ultimately, getting access to the vaccines for our staff was critically important so that people do have a chance to be protected from this virus. Mental and behavioral health. This is a slide really from a couple of years ago, where we talked about, you know, the need for additional mental behavioral health services. Centerra at the time called Trauma-Informed Care, you know, the number-one issue in the community, and that we need to, you know, help students that are having trouble focusing on learning because of where their brain is. If they are worried about what happens in the evening or what happens away from school, then they can't focus on learning, and we need to address that. And so, a few years ago, some of the staff members that Scott Hand just talked about, the BCBA's, our board-certified behavior analysts, brought an idea to us in how Rockingham County Schools could create a system of mental and behavioral care that would be based on best practice. Let's do the research. Let's see what works. And this is what that system after a two-day retreat in Winchester looked like, and that's what we attempted to build. And so, at the time, you could see green were the pieces that we had in place, and then yellow was what was requested that year, and then blue for future years or, again, in a follow-up. And now, it looks like this. So, after a year, you evaluate, what did this do? We looked at the data, and there was an update to it. And so, that same system for mental and behavioral health will help us not only navigate the difficulties as students come back from a pandemic, from a year where learning was so different, but it's been part of our long-term goal, to really get students ready who are having trouble focusing on their work and focusing on learning. And in the current budget, we will be able to pretty much complete this chart. And so, it's one of the key success stories, I think, where we already had planned for the things that we knew were important for all children to learn. But to now be able, again, after this return of students, to really have a system in place. And the presentations that Scott talked about, our BCBA's are now presenting to other school divisions in Virginia and across the country about the systems that should be in place in order to help students as they navigate, you know, these difficult situations. And so, that's been recognized, and we want to, again, fund that to completion with a number of items that you'll see. Again, that's kind of the left side of the slide here, Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs. The mental behavioral health addresses some of these, physiological needs, safety needs. And then, as you go higher, of course, you know, you're talking more about, at the top, self-actualization, which then leads to this right side, right? Where we talk about the different types of learning that can take place. So, at the base, remembering something. Again, that's what we focus a lot on, maybe understanding a concept. But then, the things that we need to get to, application, right? Analysis, evaluating different ideas, and then creating them. And again, creativity at the very top to create new understanding from information that we already have. And so, in order to accomplish those higher-order thinking skills, we first need to make sure students are ready for it, and then we need to change our learning environments to not just focus on remembering and maybe understanding, but on application and the higher-order thinking skills. As part of our journey, you know, we have equipped students with new tools that also helped us, of course, early on in the pandemic, because students were ready to engage, you know, with their electronic tools. Much of the one-time money that came in in school divisions across the country had to be spent on technology, and we were in good shape. But there are always changes, and so, of course, you've already approved some of the refresh cycles for our devices, and there was also, I mean, the budget, again, because we have one-time funds available, upgrades to audiovisual equipment in classrooms. So, as smartboards fade away, you know, adding interactive panels to put all the other schools on the same level as the schools that recently were renovated. So, these are all pieces, you know, in that journey. And in terms of the long-term success in learning, just like we've had opportunities to reconsider, you know, remote learning, we've also actually had significant opportunities to look at this idea of narrowing the curriculum, to really look at what the essential ideas are. A year ago, when we talked about giving teachers an hour a day, maybe, or 45 minutes a day, to start talking about collaborating, to get to project-based learning, where they would focus on these key ideas, determine what the essential content is, and then develop that by using backwards design, you know, what are the ideas, and then how do we have evidence, and then determining the actual activities that lead to that? Well, when you lose half the school year, and you still want to make sure that the essential ideas are there, and the essential content is there, now you're forced to really take a close look. And so, that was an opportunity, really at the extreme level, to look at what we absolutely needed to focus on. So, in some cases, it was you had 18 class periods with students. What will you talk about? What are the ideas? What's the content? And so, teachers have had that opportunity. It's not what we wanted. It's not what the teachers wanted. But, again, it's one of the opportunities that we actually had to focus on that. And so, we can, you know, again, continue these steps to improve our learning environments. Another piece that affects the budget, again, like we said last year, let's focus on cognitive science. Let's look at how people actually learn. We did a book study last year with Daniel Wollingham book from UVA about, you know, how you can translate what we know in cognitive science to the classroom. And so, we kept looking at, you know, what the research really shows in terms of better strategies. And one of the areas where we found room for improvement, and this is really true across Virginia, is the area of reading. And so, there has been science and research now for quite a while that how we teach reading and how many educators across the country have taught reading leads to certainly gains in literacy, but many of the strategies are actually strategies that are used by poor readers who cannot decode a word, and then they use contextual clues in that sense to decode the word. Context is important when you want to read a sentence or more, but to actually decode the word, there are better strategies. And Mississippi, actually, was one of the first states to try this and had enormous success with it. And so, we ran a pilot at John Wayland this year. And so, because we have that opportunity with funds that can be spent for the next few years in recovery from the pandemic, this is one of the things that we also want to address. Again, it meets evidence criteria, you know, evidence-based learning. It's approved by the International Dyslexia Association, so it can help students with a number of issues. And again, in Mississippi showed tremendous success, and at Wayland, they were, you know, using this program this year and showed improvements there, but it's very intensive. And so, again, this is what we want to focus on in terms of research-based literacy strategies. So, in terms of the numbers, we are still lagging the nation in Virginia in terms of average teacher salaries. Halfway through the year, with the help of the Board of Supervisors, we were able to give a 3% cost of living adjustment. So, all staff who are on contracts received a 3% pay increase, and we proposed to follow that up with another 3% pay increase for all contracted staff, is really what they should say during the, for the new school year, so beginning July 1. A percent increase costs approximately $1 million, so the cost of a 3% increase is $3 million. There is money from the state for this. The General Assembly, and then with the governor's signature, implemented their share of a 5% pay increase, so 5% over the two years. If we do three and three, obviously, we're a little bit higher than that, but we do receive the state share. Again, it's important to remember that's not a 5% increase across the board. It is the state share of the SOQ positions. So, we would get money from the state to make up for some of that, and if we don't give it, then we get less money. We were able to also mid-year adjust clerical scales and some others in the classified scales. And again, we had said we would continue that, because originally, the plan was to do those at once, but, you know, given the financial situation, of course, you know, we'll fix the ones that are most out of line with surrounding divisions. And so, for this round, teacher assistants. Not only did we still see a teacher assistant pay lag behind other divisions in the area, but our teacher assistants have also played an increasingly important role in those classrooms. They were already serving our students so well, but now, they were asked, when the classes were split, to take those students and really work with them while the teacher was working with the other group. And so, there are increased responsibilities, and we will also lean on teacher assistants for some of the professional development that's happening for the letters program. So, rather than shortening the school day like we had proposed a year ago, we will increase the hours for teacher assistants that, you know, can do that, and then have the teacher assistants work for a period of time with students while teachers can work together in their grade levels on letters training. And the cost of the teacher assistant, and then in addition to that, you saw earlier in the tiered systems of support, you know, setup that we have these behavior support assistants in our schools that work with the students that have behavior, that need behavior management, that need help with their behavior. Those also, you know, have taken on increasing responsibilities. And so, again, that's an area where the difference, again, should be a little bit higher for those that take on these roles as behavior support assistants. So, $750,000 is the overall cost of that adjustment. There's also an increase for food service staff, but that's funded separately. There's a slide at the end, but just to make that clear, again, there's an area also where classified staff are seeing a raise there. Tiered systems of support. So, you saw that chart earlier. We're adding elementary, middle school behavior support assistants, but then also at Rockingham Academy. We're also adding two behavior specialists. So, currently, we have two. Each of them takes on two attendance areas, and so, that will fill that chart where we have a behavior specialist in each attendance area. And the total cost of that is $410,000. Again, this is not increased local funding. This is funding through Title I. Instructional increases. You heard the new course that was proposed for Teachers for Tomorrow, so where students could get some experience working with other children. And that's a long-term plan of ours to really, through our high schools already, identify those kids that are promising as educators and work with local universities to get them through the teacher education program. But we also have a program where, up to this point, we've helped those who already have a college degree but need to be certified to teach, to help them through a program. And now, this one, Grow Your Own Teacher Program, will address staff we currently have who still need to earn their college degree, and then, as part of that, the teacher licensure. And so, we're working with Blue Ridge Community College and JMU on that program. We're also funding the computer science curriculum. So, computer science has standards of learning and a curriculum that's implemented across different classes, so it's not a standalone class in that sense. And so, the materials that are needed, we need additional tutors for English learners, and then some special education software. So, again, that instructional increase is about $130,000. I also want to point out the one-time money. So, ESSER funds, elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds. We will also talk about it as CARES money. For this upcoming year, from the first round, we still have about $900,000 that we can spend for this upcoming year. Some of that will be to buy software that teachers have identified through that online learning that's happened over the last year as promising. As part of that, because they're one-time funds, they are also limited, so there has to be an evaluation with all the existing software as well, because once this money is gone after the second year, then, you know, we have to decide what software to keep. And so, this gives us a chance to use additional software. As I said earlier, technology needs, outfitting our classrooms with new AV equipment, and then again, letters. So, the training I referenced for materials will use some money from the first round. The second round of CARES money for this upcoming year, so this is just the first part. just the first part of it, almost $3 million. So that will pay for high school behavior support assistance. You saw, you know, Title I funding, elementary, middle, and then high school funded by CARES Round Two. Again, letters training, we are, again, paying assistants to take classes for some part of the day to allow teachers to work with their grade levels in letters training. Some facilities improvements, again, long-term, we will benefit tremendously from having improved ventilation systems. You know, we use the mobile HEPA filters for now. Again, with, we have a flu season every year, and certainly the improved ventilation and some of these other strategies can help with that as well. Again, we'll use some of it for technology needs and others for remediation support. So some teachers in English departments will be funded with this for a year. And of course, we usually have, in case that's not returning money, there's always then attrition. So we would offer one-year contracts, but then those can become permanent if that money is not available long-term. And so they could then replace other teachers, as that remediation support is no longer needed, you know, after year two post-pandemic. Other positions that we're adding at the cost of $1.3 million, the General Assembly changed the ratio that's required, students per school counselors, so we're adding some school counselors. Again, we're adding some EL teachers and assistants. Rockingham Academy, in addition to the two behavior support assistants, will also get a school resource officer. That's been requested. For CTE, currently, students have a requirement to have a work-based learning experience. And currently, that coordination is done by teachers who really, with the one period that they have to spend on that, they can't visit job sites in areas where students are gaining that experience. And so we will hire a coordinator that works with those students directly in the buildings and can visit job sites. So that's an improvement of our CTE programs. We also have additional Title IX requirements that require a lot of training. We do a number of Title IX investigations every year, and we will combine that with attendance compliance. Becky Hill Shiflett, who is responsible for the tiered systems of support, has now, you know, if you look at the chart that's been filled out, she is working on an enormous project. And so we're moving attendance compliance, together with the new Title IX compliance, into compliance supervisors. So that's one essential office position that's added. And then we have additional enrollment positions. Again, some of them are funded with state money. That's just the second year of that. We'll see, you know, what enrollment looks like. We certainly hope to have smaller class sizes if our enrollment does not return. That gives us a chance for the next year, because there is some hold harmless fund, funding from the state, even if our enrollment doesn't pick up immediately, because at this point, I know many families aren't quite sure yet what school will look like in the fall, because the pandemic isn't over. So we anticipate that enrollment may be lagging still for the next year. The state is taking care of it financially, but it allows us to have smaller class sizes potentially in our schools. And, but we do have some enrollment positions in the budget. Also, some administrative interns. Again, rather than adding assistant principals, let's start with interns, because those are time constrained. And again, if that funding is then not available long-term, we can adjust for that. And we're adding a custodian. At MTC, there is only a slight increase this year, so that's a $55,000 increase. That's basically the pay increases. But as you mentioned earlier, Ms. Lower, there was a really good conversation at the executive board meeting about, again, the future of MTC, starting, you know, detailed evaluation of which programs are there long-term, what's the benefit, are students working in that area? Do they need, for example, to get their credential? Or are there other ways to maybe even increase attendance, you know, to have middle schoolers there? That will be a conversation. But for the year after next, there, we certainly are looking forward to the Aviation Maintenance Technician Program that MTC is proposing. And so the executive board gave the go-ahead on that. So that will be really exciting. Again, another modern program that's added after the cybersecurity one that was just recently added. That's one of the shining programs and was the first one, you know, with that type of a setup in the country. So the total expenditures, $154,566,630. I know when you see a $10 million increase, that looks enormous. But again, remember that a lot of those funds are short-term funds that we can use strategically for facilities upgrades, for programs that will, we will benefit from long-term. So professional development is always a good one, because again, that can help you for a decade, even though it is one-time money, and it's not local money, right? This is the money coming from the state and the federal government. On the revenue side, again, we have a slight decrease in miscellaneous revenue. There's a decrease in the non-resident tuition and Medicaid reimbursements. State revenue is up significantly. Again, $2.2 million of that is the compensation supplement. So it's, again, that share of the 5% raise for SOQ positions. The state's also giving us $2.2 million for no-loss funding. If you remember last year's budget cycle, we held back millions of dollars because of an anticipated loss in sales tax. We also weren't quite sure what enrollment would do, and additional, you know, lottery funds and so on. And so not only this school year, but for next year, the state is adjusting for that, because it happened across the state. And so for drops in ADM and membership, we get some no-loss funding there. Basic aid, of course, decreases because we have fewer students. But then increases in ad-risk funding and preschool funding were re-implemented. And sales taxes going up, the revenue is going up as well. So we see a significant increase in state revenue. And then again, we have to be very careful, because the no-loss funding, you know, that's eventually going away. But by the time that happens, we hope, again, that our enrollment is back to what we're used to. Federal revenue, increase of $4.3 million. That's not long-term funding. Right again, ESAR is the key there. One wrinkle in all of this is, of course, recently, you know, a new stimulus bill passed Congress, and President Biden signed it. And so there is money coming to states again. We don't yet know the details. There's some indication that Virginia is getting, I believe, something like $1.9 billion for education. Then that filters down. 80%, I believe, have to come to localities. And then it all depends on what the restrictions are on that. So as that happens, you know, we'll have additional conversations. But again, that's short-term funding. That's not money that we want to use for ongoing expenses such as salaries. State learning funds, $350,000 there. That's actually what pays for those six enrollment positions. Again, we don't quite know yet where we need them. But our turnover every year is, you know, significant enough that if we have additional staff, then even if they're one-year contracts for now, because of short-term funding, certainly, they will then become, can become permanent as other staff retire. The local share of education, we're asking for an increase of $2.5 million. So the local share would be $68.4 million approximately. And so if you think about the 3% salary increase, so 3% for mid-year, another 3% now, that's a total cost of $6 million. Rockingham County has already provided us with that first half of the first increase. And if you add the 2.5 to that, that's $4 million. And then the state revenue compensation supplement, $2 million, so it gets you exactly to the salary increases. So what we're asking our local funding body, the Board of Supervisors, to increase our budget buy is basically the money needed for the 6% over the course of the two-year salary increase. That's not covered by the state supplement. So all the other projects are funded creatively with money, you know, we held from other projects last year that were, you know, we've looked at and were spending them on our most important projects. And also, of course, some increases in state funding, especially for projects where we have a shorter timeframe. So again, the total budget is the same, as you saw earlier, about a $10.2 million increase. There's always a separate fund, the cafeteria fund. So for food services, it's a self-funding process. There will be a slight increase in lunch prices. Again, that's, we don't really have much of a choice in that that's given to us. And again, as I said, there's some increases for food service staff. So that Fund 2202, that's a balanced budget there. Again, that's one of the areas where, a year ago, when we closed down our schools, food services was the first area that came right back. Our food service employees, they were there from day one. I was at Pleasant Valley a few times, and families came in and could receive their meals. And so food service employees, they stepped up big time during the pandemic, as everyone has, right? This was difficult for families. This was difficult for teachers and for all staff. But the food service employees, they were there right away, helping families, you know, helping feed the families. And that's certainly one of the areas that our community relied on big time. And so the request to the Board of Supervisors, again, an increase locally of $2.5 million. And I do want to point out that not only does Rockingham County have a particularly unique budget process in place, where the school division doesn't come to the Board of Supervisors to say, we need $5 million more locally, only to then negotiate it publicly to an amount. There's a lot of work that happens ahead of time in terms of looking at what county revenue is. We had, Cheryl Mast and I had really good meetings with County Administrator Stephen King and with Trish Davidson, the Finance Director, to talk about what increase would be responsible in a, if the top tax revenue percentage was held the same for the school division. And that's really, you know, what we are asking for, the $2.5 million. And I will also say that during the pandemic, you know, things that aren't always well-known in many school divisions, when the locality received money from the federal government, the locality kept that money, spent it on, you know, fire and rescue, on law enforcement. And of course, that happened in Rockingham County, too. But there was also immediately a call to us, what do you need? Right? We were ordering masks, we were ordering Plexiglas, we were ordering all kinds of stuff to protect our staff and students. And there was a significant amount of money that came from Rockingham County. And that was an immediate call, right, from Mr. King and from Trish, to say, hey, what do you guys need? And then again, mid-year, the Board of Supervisors and, again, County Administrator, Finance Director, saying, hey, we can do a 3% mid-year cost of living adjustment. And schools are part of it. It wasn't even a question. So appreciate that a great deal. And also then, of course, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention again Chief Holloway and his effort. And number, on a number of occasions, you know, we talked, and educators were prioritized in the Virginia Plan. And he said, on more than one occasion, you know, on more than one occasion, that students need schools, teachers, we need to protect them. And he made all kinds of efforts, not only to protect those in the highest-risk categories, but also especially our educators. And as you know, tomorrow will be our fourth clinic, where the second dose will be administered. So two weeks from tomorrow will be two weeks past the second shot for any staff member that had wanted Moderna vaccine. And, you know, that provides significant protection for our staff. So again, our return of students happens after that. And so, yeah, can't thank Chief Holloway enough. He's done amazing work there. Next step, so tomorrow, the board will meet again. Again, as you have already, you know, been part of the conversations about this budget, tomorrow is the vote on the budget at East Rockingham at 6:30. And then on Wednesday, I will be presenting the budget, if approved, to the Board of Supervisors at the County Office Building. And I will try to answer any questions you may have.
Board members, questions? Thank you, Dr. Scheichel, for that presentation. We appreciate it. I think that this is always our version of March Madness for the budget, particularly for Ms. Mast. It's her version. And so we appreciate the efforts that go into this. It's a lot of work in this year with so many moving money parts, and where the money's coming from, and how we can use it, makes it even more difficult. Two things is, is this board particularly has always been very future-focused. And I think our discussions in 2019 about the tiered systems of support, and also all the way back in, what was it, '17 for digital conversion, placed us very well for where we are right now. And that is, a lot of that is due to the support that we receive from the Board of Supervisors financially. So we always appreciate our conversations and collaborations with them. So thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Appreciate Board members, you have the attendance report in your folders for February 2021 for your review. And then we will move into School Board Questions and Answers. Mr. Breeden. Thank you. Ms. Lower?
Dr. Scheichel, I know that you have gotten this question, as well as, I think, every board member's probably gotten this question. Can you please explain the HLA and the decision to stay in HLA for the remainder of the semester?
Sure. So as you saw in the budget slide, we created the HLA as an opportunity for families to have their children attend school remotely, entirely remotely. Early on, of course, all students in certain grade levels, other than pre-K through first, stayed remote. And, but some decided to keep their students in the HLA for the entire first semester. When we, when we started the HLA, we said, you know, setting up basically a separate school system for this has some consequences. So if a small school that only has one class in each grade level has, let's say, five or 10 students in each grade level that want to be in the HLA, we, that teacher in that grade level, because there's only one, can't possibly teach the HLA students while also teaching, you know, the second graders, for example, in the building. And so we had to pull teachers out of the schools where we felt class sizes were such that we could responsibly do that. And so other schools, you know, lost staff to the HLA. So it truly is its own school in a way. And as a result, it makes switching between the HLA and in-person education really difficult, because early on, you know, we operated with six-foot physical distancing. Now we will operate at a three-foot minimum physical distancing. And when we decided to bring grades two through eight back in person, we asked families, you know, which of these opportunities do you want to take? And by just bringing those students back, we had to completely reschedule a number of students with different teachers. And so there was a lot of pushback the first time we tried to change schedules. An elementary student would now, for the, you know, second part of the semester, have a different teacher. But at that time, we also had more time. You have to remember that if schedule changes are permitted, you have to have sufficient time for families to make a decision. We have to follow up to make sure that everyone, you know, has made their decision, because otherwise, you get these last-second requests. Then schedules have to change. Teachers have to be reassigned. And transportation can only then even begin to change bus routes. And so when we made the decision to return to four days a week, we wanted to make sure that we could do that for the last quarter, basically, of the school year. And as a result, the choice we had offered at the beginning of second semester, which was, which model do you choose for the second semester, that mean, you know, that's a choice for the semester. And so when we have a full class in the HLA, not everyone chose it necessarily because of health concerns. You know, there was also the difference in HLA classes meeting with the teacher four days a week, and in-person because of that A-B split, two days a week. So some families decided, you know, they feel it's better for their child to be in a Zoom session four days a week with a teacher. And as a result, they selected the HLA. Well, now, as we're increasing that to four days in person, families, some families have contacted us to request a change. And because we've pulled teachers from schools, there may not physically be, you know, room in those classes, because they have because they have combined now the A-day and B-day students into one group and a three-foot minimum distancing. That can fill up a class because there may be another room, but no teacher because that teacher is teaching in the HLA. And so it's really difficult on such short notice to now, again, switch everyone's schedule because of also the time it takes to create bus routes and everything else. There's just not a lot of time available for it. And so what we've said is that our schools, as always, work with families that have a hardship situation. So certainly, schools have taken phone calls and emails and requests that have come directly from families or through central office. And they will simply have to see how many students they can physically accommodate and also what that does to class schedules. Because again, we want to avoid a second grader now who's been in person having to change schedules again because of a balancing need. And, but in hardship cases, our schools will do the best they can. If it's purely because of convenience, then that's going to be more difficult. But that is a choice that families made for the second semester. And so, yeah, if we had, you know, all the extra educators available, then that wouldn't be as big of an issue. But certainly, again, we have teachers that work in each system and to allow just the changes at this time would not really work out in terms of numbers. Because again, we still operate under a physical distancing restriction. So that's the long answer. It's a complicated setup. And, but it allowed us to give families that choice of keeping their students at home.
Thank you for that explanation. Also, with the governor's announcement of new guidelines for graduation, do you anticipate graduation times and dates changing?
We had a little bit of a heads-up that the numbers for graduation ceremonies may change. We weren't really sure what they would change to. Our initial plan was to basically repeat what we did last year at the fairgrounds. Because with, you know, the smaller numbers, that would have been possible again. We could have even made a short-term change to say, "If the numbers increase, you know, just bring lawn chairs and we'll just have our own unique Rockingham County Fairgrounds graduation again." But when the governor announced that graduation ceremonies could be at 30% capacity of a venue, but with an upper limit of 500 indoors. So indoors is not really a significant improvement for us. But with up to 5,000 outdoors, and it's always a smaller number. So if you have a high school with a 3,000-capacity football stadium, you know, it can be 900 people, 30%. It's a lower number. If you were to go to FedEx Field, you know, 30% is a smaller number. You could be at 5,000. And so we've had ongoing conversations even before the announcement, just in case. And so those conversations are still ongoing with venues that could accommodate more people. And so it certainly is possible that graduation changes will still be announced.
But do I still need to hold June 12th at 1:00 PM for Broadway High School open?
At the fairgrounds, you know, there's a different turnaround at the time. But yeah, we will do our best to have the graduations on the, you know, at least, you know, it might, even last year, you know, we had to change one graduation, you know, to Sunday. And so short-term changes are possible, but we don't anticipate that graduation all of a sudden will be a different week.
So keep the 12th open.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
And again, the alternatives have not yet been really discussed in detail. So what dates, what times may be available? You can imagine that the larger venues are getting requests from multiple school districts. So just today, I received a text message from another superintendent saying, "Hey, have you guys thought about graduation elsewhere?" And I said, "Yes, we have, but I don't really want to tell you where." And so then I asked when their graduation was. And it was a different week completely. So I was a little bit more comfortable sharing some contact information because I'm certainly not going to risk our own graduation ceremonies to give another school district maybe first dibs there, so.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Mr. Falk? Thank you. Dr. McCulkin?
Pass.
Thank you. Dr. Scheichel?
I'll pass.
I think I went through the list, didn't I? That's everybody. All right. Thank you to all of you for being here with us this evening. We appreciate it. Thank you to RCEA for their questions. And I'm sure if you have any follow-up, Dr. Scheichel's more than happy or any board member to discuss with you. But we appreciate you being here with us this evening. Board members, we have reason to go enter into closed meeting. I need a motion for approval. Or motion to go into the meeting, I guess.
I move that the board enter a closed meeting pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 to discuss and consider personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McCulkin. Any questions or discussion?
Before we go into closed meeting, Dr. Scheichel, I had one thing that I wanted to mention to you. Can we reach out to REFIE and see if maybe somebody could join us at the April 26th meeting, which would be the next time we're in a school? I think it would be great to have some of their representatives here, particularly when we do Inspire Awards.
Absolutely.
And we get to the end. And they'll probably get ready to do Teacher of the Year and their spring grants. So maybe that'd be a good date. Anything else?
Will do.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, please vote. Motion carries 5-0. We're now in closed session. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Safe travels home this evening.